All right, welcome to our bill of course meeting for Tuesday, May 13th. I'd like to call, start off with the pledge allegiance. Hi, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have two presentation by autism supportive committee. I don't know where that chair is at right now, but when he arrives, we'll work him into the schedule. So I'm going to jump ahead to an update on our water and our wastewater upgrade projects by Anthony from Delaware Engineering. Not working.
I'm in the back of the theater.
That better.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, Anthony. You're going to have to push the button to turn it on.
Yes. Can everybody hear me? Okay, you can hear me. Good evening. As introduced, I am Anthony Mantis from Delaware Engineering. I have been working on the wastewater and drinking water projects, which include upgrades to site improvements as well as treatment and equipment. I'm going to start with the wastewater because it's the shorter story. The wastewater treatment plant has not seen any activity at this moment in terms of construction. This is largely due to the nature of the project. In contrast to the water treatment project, it is much more focused on equipment as opposed to site changes. There's no new building. It's replacement of existing treatment processes, and these typically have a longer lead time. I've received some RFIs from the contractor with their vendors, so I know that some metals are forthcoming, but I have not received them yet. And once these submittals come through, the typical lead times tend to be somewhere between six to nine months. So I wouldn't expect to see the wastewater treatment plant to enter an actual construction phase until towards the end of this year. This is based on the fact that the preconstruction meeting was held earlier this spring or March. One thing that could be done for the wastewater treatment plant project sooner than later, and this would be the better time of the year to do it for biological growth reasons, is the vacuuming of the oxidation ditch, for which earlier this week I reached out to the contractor to ask them for a lead time to see if we can get that in motion in coordination with Will Caruso, the chief operator at the plant. I have not received that response back, but everything is moving smoothly. Moving on to the water side, that's a...
Do you want us to wait until he's done with all of them before we ask questions?
I'm going to ask that. Do you want to wait till the end or take them at the end of the day?
You can ask as your questions occur.
Just a quick question about the wastewater. The equipment upgrades and purchase and all the rest of it, how much of that equipment comes from places other than the United States?
So, the UV units are from Glasgow, which is a New Jersey-based vendor. So that part is US.
Right.
Then the sand filtration units that you're replacing comprise air blowers and some mercible pumps and some other mechanical equipment that might have components imported from other countries.
Correct.
But the vendor themselves, West Tech, is a United States vendor.
Okay. I mean, you get the point of the question?
Yes, I haven't received, I mean, every contractor for every project has been asking about tariffs and potential lead time issues and cost changes. I can say for both the water and wastewater projects for Rhinebeck so far, neither contractor has requested a change order due to tariffs or to inform me of any potential postponement or delays in the work because of tariffs.
Okay.
So, everything seems clear for the time being.
Okay. And then just remind me, the oxidation ditch is the oval, the big oval thing or the big round thing?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thanks.
I have a quick question. So for the wastewater, I know that we're doing that with a low interest or no interest loan, but will you still be seeking grants while we're moving along with the project?
I believe there's a discussion about resubmitting a grant application for CWS or F funding in addition to the loan.
All right. So that time, we may work with that as we get...
You can definitely procure additional funds during the construction phase of the project.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Would somebody else have any other questions on the wastewater side? Okay. So the drinking water, in contrast to the waste, is a fully working construction site at the moment. Actually, earlier today, we were just placing concrete, which is why I had this change of clothes in my car for the splash. This site allows earlier construction because it has more site development. There's a proposed building. There's a large lay down area that's going to be an asset to the village free of charge, which also the village had the benefit of the contract requiring to cut down some trees, which are a liability for the village, also free of charge. So things are moving well in that direction. We did the utility locates, and during that practice, there was a discrepancy between what we found in the ground in comparison to what was indicated on the record drawings at the water treatment plant, and that worked to the village's favor. It presented it. In short, we previously, construction believed that the existing water main was passing underneath the proposed building diagonally. So in order to construct in the building, we were going to have to reroute that 16-inch water main, which I'll note has about 170 PSI pressure on it. It's a considerable operation in the bigger size. So suffice it to say, when we found the true location of the ground, I came up with an engineered process to try and eliminate that work, which resulted to a cost savings for the project. So now we're not doing the 16-inch DIP work. Instead, we just offset the proposed building by an additional, say, 15 to 20 feet from its originally proposed position, which had some add-ons for that cost, but the overall net was a credit to the village. So in rough numbers, I'd say it was about $150,000 worth of a credit for the DIP work. And when you take on all the add-ons for extending the breezeway connecting to existing proposed building, the village ended up somewhere at $84,000 worth of a credit. Pick up some other miscellaneous credits I've found around the site. I can say that the current status is the project started with a $100,000 contingency allowance for spending without the need of a formal change order for EFC, and right now that contingency allowance is at $188,000. So we're essentially $88,000 under budget right now, which is good news, right? It's the kind of thing I'm comfortable coming up here saying. In terms of schedule, the contractor is currently on schedule. Right now, their biggest item pending is the pre-engineered manufactured, pre-engineered metal building, PEMB. We are going to be designing the foundation for that building. We have some basis of design criteria in the bid specs, but until we have the actual building from the vendor, which could vary based on the bid results, you don't have the true reaction forces and acre bolt layouts and other things that are parameters for size and foundation. So that's kind of put a bit of a pinch on the schedule, but I think everything is in good control right now. And based on the latest update from the contractor, we expect to have that submittal in within the next week or two. I think everything is moving smoothly. Somebody have any questions for the water side? Gary?
Waiting for this to come on. I'm just too fast, I'll talk. So just to put it in perspective, for everybody understands, that the savings, we have our original building, and then there was going to be a short breezeway that went to a new building. And so that new building is just being offset, as Anthony said, to go over that pipe that we now don't have to move. So it's can visualize that. It's kind of a great way that we may be able to find and not have to relocate this pipe and the breezeway will be now, even with this foundation, everything, we go over that and not be interference. And the good news, I think from what I'm hearing, is that we plan to have this building up and closed prior to winter.
I would have expected to be so.
So November was the date we were looking at to be able to have the new building ready, and then we can start taking equipment and everything else.
Equipment won't be up and running by then, and we should have a weatherproof building, I expect by then.
And there's other things that you haven't mentioned that I think are important is...
Violet Hill Pump Station.
Well, you took care of the large tank, asbestos tank that was in the basement.
Yes.
And that came out very easily, much easier than expected to clean, make, clear up that space. You're working on the garage or the shed.
The barn yesterday.
The barn, so because we're rebuilding that barn space, so that's in preparation of going forward. So it's, as Anthony said, moving forward very well. As a trustee, I know I encourage you all to go, but right now, I'm going to encourage you to only go when we have clearance and have, you know, available people. So you are not, because it is a very active construction zone. So I'm just asking you for your patience. If you want to make a visit, just make sure you coordinate it through Kyle at DBW to before you do that.
Kyle took me on a really nice tour of both water and wastewater last week or the week before, something like that. Question, what's going in this new building that we're connecting via breezeway?
So it's going to receive two Trident filtration units.
Okay, so that's the parallel filtration system?
Yes. So I guess there's two treatment trains in parallel right now. One is a conventional filtration system, and one is already a Trident system. However, the existing Tridents, they're Model 210As, yeah, right? And they are rated...
Not those.
For a maximum influent turbidity of 70 NTU.
Which is not the Hudson River.
Right. So the Hudson River, I can say, over the past weekend, just because of the rains I experienced last week, we've been seeing the NTUs somewhere about 150, 140, fluctuating in that range. Today was 123. It's coming down as the rains stop a little bit, but the 70 is a max for your current treatment equipment. And the optimum performance is supposed to be below 30 NTU. So we're like five times higher than we should be. And the 150 that you're seeing right now is not the highest that the plant has seen, right? So the new building is going to provide upstream pretreatment in order to lower the turbidity to acceptable levels for your current equipment. If that makes sense. So it's appreciated.
So, yeah, so in the existing building, there's like the four big settlement tanks, and then like just past the four big settlement tanks is like the existing Trident system?
Sort of.
Okay. But like, we basically have two systems working in parallel to each other, right?
There's two trains today. Call them maybe a train is a good way. There's two parallel trains going through the plant today.
Right. And one of them is the Trident system that's not great, and then the other one is just like a completely different...
It's a conventional filtration system, which starts with flocculation tanks.
Yeah, those are the settlement tanks?
No, those are to help the suspended solids and other TOC organic matter clump together, flocculate, right?
Oh, right, yeah.
And then that flock enters a settling tank. There are two settling tanks parallel to the plant underneath the berm right in front of where you park.
Yeah, yep.
So those settling tanks have backflow laws, and what they essentially just do is they allow for the water to decelerate to a velocity that will allow solids to settle down, settling tanks. And then from there, the flow goes into the conventional sand filtration system. So it's kind of a three-stage process in that stream, whereas the whole benefit of a Trident system is supposed to combine all of three of those stages into one, which is why it's just those two tanks there for that side, that train. But, you know, that sounded good on paper, maybe 20 years ago, but given the influent raw water quality, the performance of the existing Trident units isn't adequate to handle that kind of water.
Correct.
So we're giving it pretreatment that will allow them to handle it now.
Got it. So the new building is just helping that other train?
That's correct.
It doesn't have anything to do with the traditional conventional train?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
But additional enhancements are that we're providing UV disinfection, which that will affect both the combined flow from the two trains before it goes out into the common clear wells and out to distribution. And out to distribution, we're also upgrading the existing pilot pumps. So now, a big benefit to the village is that you're going to have DFD-rated pumps now. And that means that you can modulate how fast these pumps are running and adjust your production rates accordingly. Something the village has struggled with is maintaining proper contact time with chlorinate chlorine, which excessive time can result in DDP disinfectant byproducts, right? Which some of those are powerful. And there's another story to that, too. So having said that, when you can slow down your pumps and pump slower but longer, you can, I guess, adjust the contact time of the chlorine. And we're lowering the chlorine dose because, one, we're enhancing the potassium for a magnate dosing station in the beginning, which will help eat up the TOC, and that does not result in DDP, so less chlorine. And we're providing UV disinfection, which will also allow us to use less chlorine. And for the last factor that would affect the contact time of chlorine is the aging water in the system, not aging, but old water. Technically speaking, it's counted in days of how old the water was from consumption, from production to consumption. And up at Hill Road...
Hiley.
Hiley Road, I apologize.
Where the reservoir is.
Yes. The Violet Hill Pump Station there, adjacent to the tank, is getting new pumps. And the tank that's there, I believe is at least a 2 million gallon tank, whereas the village's water consumption is somewhere in the 600,000 gallons per day range, right? So that means you should have at least three days' worth of water up there. You don't want the water sitting there for three days, especially if it's going to settle and stratify within the tank and other issues like that. So with this upgrade, another thing that's being, another piece of equipment that's being procured is a mixer, jet mixer within the tank. So that way, nothing will have time to dead zone, as it's referred to, in the tank. The mixer's already in there. That was placed earlier this week, but we're waiting with the chief operator of the plant, Brian Alex, to CCTV the tank. I believe it's up for its annual inspection later in June. The reason we're doing this is because we want to get a better understanding of how much sediment is at the bottom of that tank right now. Otherwise, it's...
You don't want to turn it on.
Yeah, yeah. Might be stirring the coffee, you know?
Yep. How, would we vacuum it out or like...
Yeah, there are, so the same contractors that performed the CCTV inspection, they also provide various types of rovers that can just vacuum it out the same way you would vacuum out a pool, right?
And we've done this before.
You don't need to drain the tank to take it offline. It can all pass in life.
Out of curiosity, is the UV sort of system that you mentioned, I know that the water at the wastewater plant before it goes out to the Rhinebeck kill is run through a UV system. Is it a similar kind of idea?
I mean, the concept of UV makes the same, you know, radiation to just fry the microbes, right?
Right.
But they're different types. At the UV, the UV station at the wastewater plant is a non-con system, a no-contact system. Essentially, the water is going to flow through some tubes that are translucent, very transparent, and we're going to have racks of bulbs outside of the tubes. So the bulbs are never in contact with the water. It's a dry system.
Okay.
Whereas the Trojan system, which that is a Canadian product, I should know, but the contractor has not mentioned any issues yet. The Trojan system at the water treatment plant, that is a wet system. The bulb is in the water there.
All right. Thanks.
Any other questions, something?
Is the new building at the water treatment plant going to need to be heated?
Yes. It'll be a fully weatherproof building, needing energy code for insulation factors and heating as well. It also will have a dehumidifier in there, an industrial-sized one, because this happens time and again. You leave a soda can out on a hot day, what happens, right? It's going to sweat. Because you got cold water coming in, it's running through the building, and then it's a steel building that's being beaten down by the sun.
Yeah.
And nobody wants to pay for AC. Why would I need it, you know? Nobody's staying in there, it doesn't need to be comfortable. But what happens is, the cold water acts as a cooling agent for the room, and the pipes start to sweat, things start to rust, and it's dehumidified.
What's the source of heating and cooling?
I'm sorry?
What's the source of heating and cooling?
It's going to be electrical. It's going to be electric heaters. Well, the problem with some of these buildings is it, for air conditioning, I mean, it's costly, right? And for some of these buildings with these tanks and vessels that can be 20 feet long, tall, you have these 35-foot floor-to-ceiling buildings, and you're cooling down low and it's stratified. It starts to circulate, and you need to put a blow-down fan, and you just need a lot more equipment if you're going to try and temperature control the room as opposed to dehumidify it.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you, everybody.
I got a real quick question.
Please.
So there's a building at the wastewater treatment plant, I don't remember what happens in there, but I know it's everything that happens after the other stuff happens. Very specific, but it looks like a greenhouse. And is there any particular reason why that building is a greenhouse? Because I'm sure it gets hotter than the Hades in the summer. Is there like an engineering purpose for that?
I can't think of one off the top of my head right now.
Is it causing any sort of unnecessary problems?
No. It's definitely not a problem, but...
Other than for the comfort of the operators?
Yeah, it's definitely not a problem.
Otherwise, probably.
But the building could work just as efficiently if it were an opaque building, let's say.
Okay.
Having said that, there is absolutely no harm in letting the light come in. Might help a little bit, like Gary mentioned, with heat and free light, so...
All right, just curious. Thanks.
If you remember, just a few years ago, we replaced the whole roof on that because it is fiberglass, and so it weathered and cracked. And so we did a lot of, we did an upgrade to the roofing system.
Okay, yeah.
Too long ago.
So I would encourage anybody and everybody. Martina, you have my contact information. Please feel free to send me an email or give me a call if you have any questions or if you'd like to walk through the plan or anything. Of course, you'll coordinate with Kyle and the operators, as the mayor mentioned, but I'm happy to answer any questions and take any calls.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we're going to move on. Public comment. Is anybody here today for public comment? Hearing none, I'm going to move on to the treasurer's report.
Okay, treasurer's report is for the period ending April 30th. The general fund ended the month with $402,794.89. The water fund ended the month with $95,042.12. The sewer fund ended the month with $133,454.52. Vouchers presented for payment to include the pre-pays, in the general fund, total In the water fund, $83,770.76. In the sewer fund, $62,441.20. Escrow bills totaling $8,269.56. Bills for the compost facility, $4,828.67. The water treatment upgrade, $2,530. And the wastewater treatment plant and sewer improvements, $5,450.96.
Do you make a motion to approve the vouchers presented?
Second.
Did we get...
Any questions?
Yeah, did we get those?
The vouchers?
Well, did that report, did we get the report?
It's not up on line yet.
Oh, I'll have to check it. It must not have loaded. Yes, she, I have it tonight, but I'll have to make sure that it's up there.
All right, sure. I'm sorry, do a second, does that work?
A monthly operating statement is provided with the revenue expenditures through May 13th. The water and sewer made monthly billings for the water, $23,950.17. In the sewer, $32,874.17, and those are due on May 23rd. There were no adjustments this month. The constitutional tax limit has been filed with New York State in a copy of the 2526 adopted budget. The tax cap has been filed with New York State. The New York fiscal stress monitor, we received a no designation, which means that we are not in fiscal financial stress. The tax warrant and list of unpaid water sewer bills have been sent to Dutchess County for tax preparation. So it was a busy month.
Wow.
I have one, just one budget amendment. I'll probably bring some to the board on your meeting on the 27th, towards the end of the month and this week here. But I just have one for the clerk treasurer salary line item in the general fund, 1325, to increase that by 8,500, and then reduce, it's going to require a transfer also, reduce the water fund, same 8310112, by that same 8,500. So what happens is, the program just kind of puts all the benefits, just takes some out of the general, out of the general. So it's basically just reallocating stuff that should have been charged.
All right.
Make a motion to approve the pledge of allegiance presented.
Second.
Questions?
Did we vote on the other amendment or... The one before this, did we vote on?
This is the only amendment.
That was just the vouchers.
Vouchers, yeah.
Those would be included, and that's all I have.
Good. All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Just in time.
Okay, did you catch my breath here?
Yeah. We'll give you a second.
No, I'm good to go.
Can you go? Can you go now?
Right.
I'd like to introduce Joe Fallon, Chair of the Autism Support Committee, to give an update on the Autism Support Committee's strategy and structural proposals.
My pledge has some print material for you to hand out to your board members. Okay. So again, I'm Joe Fallon. I'm the Chair of the Village of Rhinebeck Autism Support Community Committee. For a brief bit of history, some of you may remember back to those faraway days of 2018, 2019, excuse me, when we started an outreach effort to businesses and organizations in the village to raise the profile of individuals visiting the village and living in the village and the area with family members on the autism spectrum. By way of raising their awareness and by doing so, hopefully allowing our village to become more accepting and accommodating to those individuals, to make this a more inclusive village for people with all disabilities, but specifically with autism. And at that time, we asked village businesses and organizations to sign on to this effort by doing one thing. We asked them to do one thing. And that one thing could have been to provide menus with pictures instead of just words for people on the spectrum. And actually, about 58% of the businesses in the Village of Rhinebeck at that time signed up to do one thing. So a couple of things happened since that initial phase of our committee work. Some of those businesses had left the village for one reason or another. Other businesses who weren't here for the initiation of that program have come into the village. We also had a pandemic right in the middle of that, which made for a challenge, made it made for a challenging effort to reach out to businesses, because a lot of them were working on very, very truncated hours. Anyway, fortunately, we're past... Anyway, fortunately, we're past COVID. I'll knock on wood for just a moment there. So what we've decided to do, and we met with the Board of the Local Chamber of Commerce, is to reinstitute this program. And instead of asking for businesses and organizations to just do one thing, we want them to do more than one thing this time around. And if you, either now or later, if you look into that little brochure that I gave you, which we'll be handing out to the businesses and organizations in the village over the next couple of months, we want them to sign a pledge saying they will be part of this initiative. That's the easy part, really. But at the next level, we want them to do more than one thing. We want them to do a number of accommodations in their businesses to be accommodating to those on the autism spectrum. And for most places, it'll be more than one thing. Okay, so we want to expand that to the businesses that are going to be part of this initiative. At the next level, we want to make sure that those businesses and organizations have their, I'll use the term front-of-house employees trained by our colleagues and partners at the Anderson Center. Trained in how to deal with the needs of individuals who come into their establishments who may be on the autism spectrum or have other disabilities. That's a third level. We weren't even scratching the surface of the last time. And the last one is that we would like these businesses to commit, to develop, and where appropriate, to implement hiring practices that accommodate for individuals who might apply for jobs at their places of business, who may be on the autism spectrum and/or have other disabilities. We're not requiring them to hire X number of people. That would probably be a bridge too far at this point, but we like them to be set up that if somebody with a disability applies for a job at their business, that they have a policy in place as to how they will, they will interact with that individual. So we're taking it way past doing one thing to doing several things that we feel at this stage of the game, given the commitment we've gotten so far over the last five or six-plus years, that this community, the business community in particular, as well as the other organizations in the community who may not be businesses per se, but who interact with the public to start taking those additional steps. We're really going to put our money where our mouth is, to coin a phrase. We are asking these businesses and organizations to step it up. And we're there to help them do that. Part of our plan is to assign a liaison from our committee to each of those businesses or organizations that signed the pledge to help them. We're not just throwing them out and letting them fend for themselves. We want to give them the support they need to do the kinds of things that our committee feels after a lot of study and work with our partners. We need to be able to offer to those visitors and residents of the village who are here, who are shopping here, who are interacting with everybody else in our village. So it's a big jump, but we think it's what we need to do to actually start to make a more significant difference for that population and become, I know when we, at the risk of getting political, why would I use the word political at a board meeting? I speak from a school board thing too. Not political out, but when we presented this to the chamber board and we used the word inclusive, there was this pause, like, well, you've all heard what's going on nationally with D E I programs, the I is inclusive. And somebody from the board said, are you actually talking about being more inclusive in the Village of Rhinebeck? And our response was, yeah, we are. You all okay with that? And unanimously, the board said, yes, thank you, thank you. That's exactly what we need, is more inclusivity everywhere, but including in our village. So that's our, that's our goal. Again, we just started rolling this out. We haven't started knocking on doors and the meeting with individual business owners, which was nigh on impossible the last time around during COVID, because a lot of them weren't coming into their businesses and they're working with a skeleton crew, but that's not the case now. They're here, their board chamber is very supportive of this new initiative, and we wanted to let you know as, as members of the village board, what we're doing. You may, you may hear from some of the village businesses, and we hope what you hear is positive, and we think what you're going to hear is positive. Any, I think any questions might have?
I remember that you have now stickers in various windows. Are you going to be doing stickers with the commitments?
Yes, we are. Yep, we are rebooting this, so even businesses who did the one thing five, six years ago, and they had the old sticker on their window, they'll get, it's in your pack, it's in your packet there, the round sticker with the purple, that's what they get for signing the pledge. So that, that gets something in their business that says, we've signed on to this program. Then when they modify their physical environment, they get the little friend third of the circle. And when they take the training from, the autism training from Anderson, they get the red ambassador circle. And we really don't care where on the circle they put it, but, and then when they actually work with us to develop and implement policies and procedures for hiring and for employing folks on this spectrum, then they get the champion third circle. And we think it's, and the way we've presented it to the chamber board is that we think every business who wants to bring more business into their establishment is going to want to have as many of those circles and third circles as possible.
The whole pie, as it were?
Excuse me?
The whole pie, as it were?
The whole enchilada, as it were, yes. I've already had one business owner say to me, I want to do all of this stuff ASAP because I want the full circle with all three things. I said, great, we'll sign you up and take care of it. Again, we haven't even pitched it outside of a relatively small circle of people yet. When I say pitched it, I'm talking about having liaisons assigned to every business in the village, whether they were part of the program in 2018, 2019 or not, and whether they have something on their window or not, they can easily take those off and replace them with the new, the new series of messages that tell the community and the visitors here, these people mean business when it comes to being inclusive, especially in terms of individuals on the autism spectrum, which if you've seen the latest, in the latest data now, it's 1 in 31, which is, I think when we started out, it was 1 in 39 or maybe?
1.4.
Higher than that, so. And we can have a debate all night long, which I'm not going to even entertain here tonight, about what's causing that. It doesn't really matter what's causing it. It is what it is. And those are individuals who are visiting the village, they're shopping in stores with their families, with their parents, however, this is not just the children's syndrome or disease, or call it what you want. Adults are on the spectrum as well as, as young kids. So again, we're going to try to go for the gusto here, but it would be a good idea if you knew, that's what we've been working on for the last couple of months. And again, we have some nice professional-looking brochures that we're going to be providing to our businesses and then holding their hand as much as they need their hands held to get this stuff done.
I'd just like to make a comment, and thank you, Joe, for doing this, but the other reason is not only to get people hired, but this is a very good workforce of people that are there, ready to go to work, that are very dedicated to doing jobs that can be performed in a lot of our businesses. And having now 1 in 31, you can just imagine how people are out there. And we need to prep our businesses to be able to bring that workforce in to be able to help them.
Absolutely. Good point.
I just wanted to say, like, this is amazing, and you know, thank you so much for all this really extraordinary work. Just at first glance, like, words like friend and supporter and champion and ambassador, like, tend to sort of imply fundraising. And I know that we need to be very careful, we're not raising funds, this is not a fundraising thing, this is a, literally, we are a friend of this population, and we're really trying hard to make sure that we're inclusive about it. But at first glance, when I saw this, I was like, is this a fundraising brochure? And I was like, clearly not. But, but I do, I do just want to sort of, I don't know, be a little bit cautionary on that one of, you know, if people see a sticker in the window that says that I'm a champion for the autism supportive, you know, like, I think we just need to be really clear that this is not a fundraising thing. So I don't know how, I mean, very clearly, it's not a fundraising thing, but at first glance, it could be seen as a fundraising thing.
Well, it's a good point. I'm sure we'll get, we'll get that question from some of the business that we visit, but that's a real easy answer.
Right, yeah. Okay, great.
No, just do good things for people who need to be treated with the respect that their condition requires. And yeah, believe me, we struggled for weeks and weeks trying to come up with those designations. And I mean, we had that discussion.
Right.
I mean, we, again, we've been, we've been very fortunate. We've written over the last five or six years, we've written two grants from the Thompson Trust, we've gotten, and will be getting money from the Chamber's Taste of Rhinebeck, from the one most recently held, and from, I think, the previous two. So that's, that's what's been fueling this.
Yeah, no, I like, I'm not, I'm not at all concerned about that side of it, but I just did sort of, I was like, wow, like, what's going on? And so, you know.
Well, it's good that you bring it up, so people who hear this and your fellow board members, no, no, this is not, we're not squeezing money from anybody. We're doing, well, I'll just be blunt about it.
Yeah.
We're raising money in other ways, and we're hoping that the fact that there isn't any money involved and that these businesses are getting the recognition they deserve by doing good things, that that would be an incentive to the businesses to say, yeah, I'll sign up.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
We'll keep you posted. Thank you very much for giving me the time to talk.
All right, we're going to move on. We're going to go right into purchase requests. We have, we mentioned at previous meeting, the police server, new police server, so they have gone out to quotes, and they had two, they tried to get three quotes, they have two quotes, let me back up here. One was from Dell, the other one was from CMI. CMI is the lower one for $9,000, Dell was?
$17,000?
$17,000. The recommendation is to go for the CMI server for $9,000. Just note that this money is coming out of the grant that they had, that they had received prior to, so there's no additional money coming out, but it's all coming out of grant, leftover grant money.
Gary, what does that exactly mean?
$9,091. Question actually about this, the prices were so different during the last meeting that we got a little confused, were these all bids for the same thing?
No, there was multiple things coming back as last time.
Right.
One of them ended up to be a state, on the state list of purchasing, which did not have to flow through us. Which was the?
It was something else, but I mean, even the difference between these two was $17,000 and $9,000.
Yeah, we just see one of the other bids are coming up because of huge differences. But the CMI and the Dell are equivalent servers, it's just that CMI is making it easier for us to do, and even Dell doesn't cover the installation costs, whereas CMI covers the installation cost.
I think the difference is this analogy from part of it, they make these things, they basically make this thing standard, whereas Dell's opening up something custom.
Oh, okay.
If I can read that as properly as I can.
Sure.
I'd still like to make a motion to accept the CMI quote for $9,091 for the new police server. Second. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Village Hall and Police Department Cleaning. So this came about only because we got some inquiries from people outside to be able to want to do cleaning for us. We currently use a contractor here and another contractor over for police. So what Martina did is go out and receive three quotes, one from Clearthrough. To summarize it, Clearthrough comes up to $18,800 a month. That covers the police department and Village Hall. The second quote was for, from Vanguard for Police Department and Village Hall, $1,700 a month. And the last one was from Super Sonic, which we're currently using in the police department, and they would also include Village Hall for $1,600 a month. But that did not include two offices up here in the fire department, which were originally requested not to use, and now they're questioning that. So that rate will go up because the fire department wants to add those two offices back in. But irregardless, the recommendation after Martina and he met with these people, the recommendation is to go with Vanguard for Police Department and Village Hall for $1,700 a month. Therefore, I'd like to make a motion to use Vanguard for our cleaning service going forward. Second. Question?
What, anything that tipped your, anything to do with this direction?
With these particular people? They presented themselves very well, and they gave a really detailed list of all the different areas that they were cleaning. They did a complete walkthrough and presented pretty in-depth quotes.
Does it, do these include, does Vanguard include the police, the fire department?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. It was all Village Hall.
It's listed as Village Hall, but it includes the fire department.
Right, okay. Do we have to terminate the existing contracts?
We run a month-to-month with the current one, and so we'll just end it at the end of the month.
Yes, the recommendation is also to start in June so that both cleaners can be given notice.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Firehouse Painting. Chief of Fire Department would like to paint the exterior, the interior of our fire base downstairs, including the doors. He was able to get three quotes. The first quote is from Carl Stuvensen for $17,200. Second quote was from Dwyer Contracting for $24,500. And the third quote from Toting Bow Painting and Wallpaper for $45,000.
What? Are they all painting the same building?
They're all painting the same building. I'd like to make a motion to approve Carl Stuvensen for the painting at $17,200 to paint the interior of the doors of our fire hall.
Second.
Questions?
I was chatting with Brian about something completely separate, and he mentioned that this would only be the third time in the fire department's history where the? this would only be the third time in the Fire Department's history where the base has been painted.
Since 1972.
Yes, since 1972, so he was begging me to make sure that that comes.
Well, one of the other things we're going to push on is they need to get it done this fiscal year. So it's very important that we spend the money now, and so...
Oh, between now and the 31st?
Time is now the essence.
Okay, great. Can Carl do it between now and the 31st? Let's hope, all right.
Brian knows the schedule.
Okay.
All right, so we voted all, we did all in favor?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, Fire Department's surplus bids. Martina, I'm going to turn it to you.
So we posted all of the surplus items from the kitchen, Fire Department, that the Fire Department wanted to get rid of since they planned to redo everything. We got bids for everything except for the grill. The dishwasher came in at $108.94. The six-burner stove with double oven came in at $108.94. The Garland six-burner stove with oven came in at $108.94. The left sink for $10.89, and the right sink for $56.65. We also had the mixer, which sold for $400.
Really? Wow. That's huge, yes.
She napped us on board to accept all of these bids.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the bids.
Second, the, is Rhinebeck Ink paying for the new kitchen? Will it get there when we get there?
Yes.
Okay.
It has not been cleared how all of that is going to transpire, but they have not requested monies to do that.
Okay.
This money that we use for the surplus will go towards whatever they do.
Got it. So to go into their capital account?
Yes.
Okay.
Vanessa, I'm going to go to you now for a couple...
We need to...
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, compost.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the bid from Beaver Line for $7,231.20 for a bagging machine for the compost project. This is recovered by the compost brand. I did consult with 131 Degrees Compost, that's the consultant we're working with, as well as the farm. And we feel like this, this particular option, we're not looking for something that's fancy with all the bells and whistles, and this does it. The other, you know, quotes we got for bagging machines are frankly, like, of another...
Overbuilt.
Yeah, they're a little bit overbuilt for our needs, for a small operation. Those quotes were ranging from $31,000 to $72,000. We're not looking to kind of have the money. So so this past Saturday, we held our, like, Come Collect Your Compost Day, where everybody could come and get a share of the finished compost. And people were schlepping, you know, all sorts of cardboard boxes and used bags and buckets. And while it's nice to urge people to bring in their, you know, reuse a bag that you've saved, being able to bag this stuff up is is more desirable.
What are the bags made out of?
They are plastic.
They are plastic.
Yeah. But it just, if you do any gardening or landscaping, it's a lot easier to move the compost product around that way.
So Vanessa, did you get three bids, or is this like a sole source because it's with your system?
This is, it's, I mean, it's, in a way, it's sort of sole source because this was the only, like, option at that tier. I did go and get those other quotes, but they were just way too expensive.
Yeah, like, the other ones, $37,975. You made a motion?
I made a motion.
Second.
All right, the only question I have is, our term for, it's really, it's a farm, is like a seven-year contract.
Yeah.
Will this thing last seven years, you think?
I hope so.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know if it has a warranty.
I mean, unless it breaks within that period, who pays for the fixing?
We're back to four-gallon, five-gallon buckets from Home Depot.
All right, so I would just be aware of that. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And just one quick comment. Vanessa, could you come and see so we can do another reimbursement?
Yes.
We're going to go on to resolutions, please. First resolution is our MVP medical and HRA renewal. Please note that this is a renewal policy, and the renewal policy came in for MVP to an equivalent policy that we currently have. So we're getting this, we have silver today, we're going to silver tomorrow if the boards all approves. Coverage-wise, it's still the same. It is an 8% increase, though, in the total cost of the coverage. But there's a recommendation to go with that and kind of our policy to kind of keep as best of insurance, health insurance policy that we can. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation for the renewal. Second, discussion.
It's essentially a silver plan from the, from the exchange.
Yeah. But you have all the options to look at, right? You can pick any one you want. But this is the one, it's most similar to the only, that's identical to the one we currently have.
Sorry, 8% increase?
8%.
I believe we budgeted 6%, so we'll just kind of budget a little bit more.
How much do we budget every year for, for the, you know, we cover the employees' deductibles? So we cover everybody at 100% in our budget?
Yes, it's like 50, 100 for a, 120 for a silver.
But there is a carryover, because we don't always go through all of that in previous year.
Right.
So what we don't use carries over, so it's not a full allocation.
We rarely spend that whole.
But I do, I do like to fully fund it, because you just...
You never know.
But the rollover, as Gary said, but we don't have in that, we'll go to this premium price.
Okay, so we'll probably have some from this year that we'll be able to cover.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next is for our municipal attorney, which is Mackie Butts and Whalen. Their previous agreement expires at the end of this fiscal year, and so we have a letter of engagement to extend that through the next fiscal year as our general legal counsel. The rates for general, $200 an hour litigation is 240, and paralegals are 150. And I'd like to make a motion to extend for this fiscal year as our general legal counsel, Mackie Butts and Whalen, specifically our current attorney, Richels. Second, question?
Would it make sense to just extend it till January, just because that's when they raise the rates?
They may not raise the rates.
They may not, of course, but I'm just saying...
But if the rates come in, we will bring it forward, and we will have a vote and decide whether we want to accept it or not accept it, which is what we do with all of our legal when they, when they bring them in.
If we only do it until January, if they don't raise the rates, then we won't have a contract.
No, we just, we knew it in January. That's all I'm saying, we knew it, and just putting it to January, that's ours.
We tend not to have termination dates on these contracts. At least we don't approve them with termination dates.
Correct.
Yeah.
But it is, it is ordered for the fiscal year. All right. All right, we have first motion and a second, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, this is a renewal from Comp Alliance for our workers' comp from Ground and Ground Insurance. As I read through it, I didn't see any changes. Martina, can you correct me if I'm wrong?
Uh, no, there's no change.
Right. I'd like to make a motion to approve our workers' comp renewal from Comp Alliance.
Second, and by no changes, do you mean no increase in the price?
No, right. Our coverage or what they're doing.
Right.
Predominantly the coverage of what they cover.
Yeah. Did the price say the same? Or do we not, is that not how this works?
That's not how this one works.
So we pay for it, we use it?
No.
Oh, okay. By claim.
Yeah. Could you just describe the part about the assessment?
Numbers quoted.
That we could be liable for assessment?
I'm not following you.
How does this work? Someplace it says that if they fall short in a year, we could be liable for an assessment?
Correct. So we have a representative who comes out every year, I speak with him, he's very nice guy. He comes down, he checks out our plants, he asks me a bunch of questions, he'll ask Kyle a bunch of questions. These are the people that I talk to pretty routinely, because anytime we have a workers' comp claim, it goes into them, and anytime we have any type of, if anybody wants to sue us, it goes into them. We use them regularly.
Employees suing us?
No.
Oh.
Outside litigation.
Outside litigation, okay.
Yes, it all does still go through them. So like, if there's a sidewalk truck in fault, this will go through.
Oh, go through that, okay.
In addition to Rich.
Right, in addition to our consultants, right.
I also, quarters, we report our payroll to them.
And so it does vary on how many incidents we have, and in the last month, we've had two, so...
Got it.
But it makes a point that it's fully assessable, which means that if somebody else, that's what I'm struggling to understand, if somebody else takes too much out of the pool, could we be liable? That's what I'm asking.
I'm not sure legally how that's worded. I just know that we've always had between $1,500 and about $3,300 returned to us every year. So we've never been, again, we've never been on the...
Never experienced.
We've never been on the negative side of this conversation.
Because I think that we give them our exact payroll numbers quarterly and provide, and, you know, provides a documentation.
This is to fund assessment? So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, to fund administration and operations?
So this means to meet loss obligations, each member can be assessed to make up the deficiency?
Yeah, we're not really deficient.
No, I'm not.
No, it's the overall pool.
The pool can be deficient, so technically, we could be liable, even though we're doing a good job keeping our numbers down. I'm just bringing that up. I'm not saying that...
Something to consider.
It's just something we need to be aware of.
Brown and Brown as an insurance company runs negative.
Then everybody shares the, everybody shares the pain of that.
Who's a veteran, are you older? I am on page 12.
And by the way, on page 11, it's telling us...
Bullet 6.
And by the way, on page 11, it's telling us that our premium is $5,000 less this year than it was last year.
All right, I'd like to make a, I made a motion to approve, but wait a second.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we usually do all of our insurance in May?
Yes.
Okay.
Vanessa?
Okay, so I'm, I'd like to make motion to pass the green government buildings resolution. Give me a second. Thank you, Eleanor. All right, so I put this together, this is, this is recommended action from the Climate Smart Communities Program. Basically, what it's saying is if the village goes forward to construct a new building, that it would meet certain green standards, and you're required to state what standard that would be. And so I'm suggesting the LEED standard, since it is the most, most common, and also what the Green Buildings Association recommends. And it's one of the suitable ones that we could choose for the Climate Smart Communities Program. So this is, this is in the event that the municipal government constructs a new building or like major renovation of a government building. And it's a, you know, it's a policy, it's not law, basically giving guidelines and support to the board in the event that we move forward with such a project.
LEED silver? Standard LEED silver?
Yeah. And I did talk to Job Stager.
Oh, great.
And he was kind enough to say that, that he would score something like this, that LEED is kind of the go-to standard. He did point out, unfortunately, the Trump administration is trying to dismantle the, yeah, the EPA, which oversees kind of LEED certification and so on. So I figured, let's pass this, we'll cross that bridge if we have to come to it.
We know what the standards are, even if EPA is, you know, not forcing them to...
And just while we're on it, one of the tools that I do use is the EPA Portfolio Manager. We use that for benchmarking for our energy usage in our buildings. And they're talking about completely dismantling that.
So for clarity, this is new building?
This is new building.
Or significant renovations.
Major renovations.
So question actually to that point, you know, the work that we've been talking about doing to this building that we haven't figured out a way to fund, would that be considered a significant enough renovation? Because I don't know how we would term this building as LEED silver.
No, that's just, that's just like, that's just replacing the heating cooling system, HVAC system?
Adding some insulation to it.
I'm talking, I'm, you know, I could reword the policy to say like, got renovation or something, you know? That's what I had in mind.
Okay.
Yeah, because, I mean, the definitions are major remodeling. So what is the definition of major remodeling?
Doesn't the local department have a definition of that?
Not really.
Not really.
It's a little sort of...
Do we get LEED as squishy for the future boards to...
I think we can LEED it squishy, I mean, considering that, you know, LEED is about to become very squishy, but I, yeah. I mean, what we could do is like specifically carve out, you know, major remodeling does not include HVAC upgrades, but...
The problem here is you need, when you build a LEED, you then got to get it certified. It's not like you just come up with a design and build it. Then you have to go through the certification that you've met LEED standard. That's part of the process. And what concerns me is...
Well, I mean, what is...
Getting, if we have, if we build a LEED standard, then we can't get the certification. What does, what happens here?
So is that LEEDs, who sets those standards?
The EPA.
The EPA. So I think that is a concern, because they won't be updated, for example.
I mean, what we could do is we could pass this, it says built to a minimum rating of LEED silver using the US LEED rating system. It doesn't say you actually have to get certified anywhere. Oh, all requests for proposals, will detail the requirement for LEED certification, okay. Well, but whatever, I mean, I don't think we should plan for the EPA being dismantled. Let's all hope that, you know, they're not that craving.
Yeah.
That might be a stupid hope, but I'm trying to be optimistic about these things. And, you know, if the EPA is dismantled, then we'll deal with it.
Or update the policy.
Or update the policy, yeah.
Yeah.
God sakes, stupid shit we have to do.
I mean, you have two twos.
I have two twos?
You have two twos, yes. In the second two, it is clear that basically the Village Board makes the determination about what standard eventually, if we're doing any of this work, where, well, we're going to have to determine, it's a major renovation, and we're going to have to determine if it's worthwhile, you know, if it's financially sound. So this still, it leaves us basically still...
It's just trying to make a statement that like, this is a priority for the board.
Right. I mean, special circumstances determined by the Village Board.
Well, then I would make it, word is so that it becomes a priority rather than a, to make this seem more like an absolute than a priority.
Could we maybe just rephrase some of it and do this at the next meeting?
What, I mean, LEED standards could change to a point where it may put it out of the price range that we could even do it. Let's just say it goes to... Let's just say it goes, the pendulum swings the other way. We always want a building, an official building. I'm, I think everybody here would agree with that.
Yeah, this is, this is not a law. So it would be up to the board at that time to say, you know, we're taking this policy under advisement, but we need to, we need to make certain changes because of cost consideration.
I mean, usually that is a clause in a lot of the complete streets. It says, you know, if, for a reasonable cost or, you know, so generally you can add that as a, or something for that.
And it also does say as long as LEED guidelines are met, official certification, you know, doesn't have to be required if it's cost prohibitive. So, you know, there are some ways to kind of back out of some of the things that are expensive.
So I want to make sure that we have that caveat, right?
I mean, I think if construction spirals that insane, then that's a job for a future board to be like, okay, let's look at our building standards policies and figure that out.
Well, maybe think about this building. It's a million dollars to just upgrade the energy efficiency of this building.
Right.
Right? It's a million dollars. To me, that's a major upgrade to do it.
We were just saying that we didn't think that was a major renovation.
Well.
Well, because there's a difference between an upgrade and a renovation, right? We're not like moving walls, we're not, you know, changing the use of spaces, we're not building six bathrooms. I don't know. I consider a major renovation, a renovation and moving everything around.
Yeah.
Which we would never do to this building because there's so much asbestos buried in that. So.
It clearly says here, we're remodeling or upgrades in order to reduce energy use and operating costs of government buildings. That's one of the qualifications for doing that.
Should we table and tweak until, until our second meeting?
Sure.
If we think that there's reason to, yeah.
I think it would be helpful. Be a little more specific.
Okay.
All right, well, please send me your comments. I'll share it around and we can, we can work on it.
Should we have the most insane footnote in the history of anything saying, should the EPA be dismantled, we would still like to breach the standards of LEED silver?
I'm going to amend the motion to postpone it so that's we.
Yes.
I think the motion fails.
Right.
So just, you just have to vote on the motion. I have a.
Okay.
The motion to revisit F and X?
No, no, you don't have to do that. Just vote on the motion that you made, which was to accept it, so, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
We don't like voting against things. I won't take it personally.
Don't take it personally.
All right, next on the agenda is discussion of park donations.
So we're looking to set up a process for accepting donations to enhance our parks. This proposal's been vetted at the committee level and then I've had people from the board weigh in. Everybody's welcome to continue giving feedback. At the last meeting, we sort of decided to just kind of move forward with, just to have an organized process. So if somebody comes to the committee with, and we've been getting different requests, different proposals, and we came up with a form, which I can also share, that people can look at, just so that we have an organized way of dealing with the information and then actually keeping it and documenting it so that we can.
What kind of, just out of curiosity, what kind of stuff are people coming to you with? Like, would you like to donate a tree or would you like to?
Well, like, for example, the Lions Club is working on a proposal which they originally were going to actually present to the, they were thinking to present to the board, and this was for the mini park, for the two to five kitty area. So that's a pretty major one. We've had people come to the committee and they asked to remove that tree that was under discussion. We've had people, you know, now we've got a proposal with a pollinator, possibly a pollinator garden, so we've been actually, it's been pretty busy actually.
Yeah.
So it just seems like a good way to document. I'm willing, I've got copies here, people want to look at it. I don't know that we need to, you know, come up with opinions right now, but just pass these on.
So we're not, we're not tassing it, right?
No, no, not at all.
I haven't seen anything.
Would it?
I don't know, you said other members of the board. I haven't seen a thing on this.
Well, I, I submitted it, but I submitted it for being, you know, put on the board docs, but it's fine.
I mean, there was some discussion, I mean, Karen, you have, you can do some research on some dollars here, right?
I'm just a little concerned that a government committee is, I mean, the law's clear that there's no authority for municipality to solicit monetary, monetary gifts, either by advertisement, nor can they conduct a fund with this or.
We're not, this, this has nothing to do with that, okay? This only has people coming to us that want to volunteer time, they want to donate goods, and if this is a, you know, if this is, that's why feedback's, if this is a concern, we can very specifically say we're not soliciting.
They can volunteer things, but if they, if they, if they are going to give a donation and the village is going to purchase it, you have to follow the procurement.
Of course we do. I mean, obviously, that's all, that's all understood. I mean, I, I'm a rule follower, believe me. That's why I like rules, because I like to say.
Why you want this policy?
A, B, C, this is what we do, this is the way it goes. The village board always has the final say, you know, to make all of that clear.
So the only thing I know is when I went through this with the outside supported committee and I dealt with legal on it, they said what you should do is look at everything on a case by case and don't have a specific policy for something, because you can lock yourself in and then be exclusive to others and everything else. So it is the board that makes the final decision. If somebody wants to donate ten thousand dollars, please do. But we can bring it to the board, the board can choose to vote on accepting that ten thousand dollars, and it can be designated and put into a capital fund for whatever being designated. But every, everything is a case by case based on the.
Right, but I mean, if somebody came, if somebody came and offered ten thousand dollars, I'd send them to see.
But it's the same thing with the Lions Club. We've been operating with the Lions Club. The Lions Club is working to raise their own funds. We can't raise the funds. The Lions, the Lions Club raises the funds.
I know.
Right, and then they can also procure the equipment.
I understand that.
And we, and then they can donate to that to the village. And we as a municipal organization can accept that. We don't need, we already, there's already rules and regulations on how we can do this, and we can, if we're ready for it, we do it.
Right, so I, I think the question here is, you know, parks committee or not, we currently don't have a policy in place on that exact thing that you were just describing. Like, what happens when an organization or a person or whoever comes to us and says, we would like to do this for the village, whether it's money, whether it's a bench, whether it's time, whatever? It, we don't, we, we don't have a policy for that.
Right, we need a policy. The question is, do you need a policy?
Well, so this sort of falls into, as you all know, Rick and I have been working on, you know, we have begun the process of like building, like, not just an employee handbook, but almost like a village handbook on all sorts of policies and procedures that, you know, might have been handshakes in the past that we're starting to need to write down because of current requirements of this, that, and the other. Did everyone know that according to federal law, we had to have a lactation policy? I did not, but we have to, so here we are. Right, so here we are. So the question that I think this raises is a really interesting one, which we don't have a, like a donations or a gifts policy.
So maybe we should do it in a general.
So maybe this gives us the opportunity to do this in a slightly more general way, not specific to parks, but, you know, kind of like fold it into this overall process. Because, you know, parks might be sort of the obvious spot where this happens, but it also happens with the tree commission. It happens.
The outside supported.
It happens to the outside supported. And so maybe there's an opportunity here to sort of make it a little, a little less specific and at the same time, take our current practices and put them on a piece of paper, which I think would be helpful for us now and future boards when we don't have the memory of the practices. Because I know that when, you know, Pat Coon and the previous board, sort of everyone left, like everyone who sort of left was reinventing the wheel. And the purpose of having policies in place is so that future boards don't have to reinvent the wheel. So I think, I think this is an interesting idea. Remember donations policy was one that.
There was one in there, and I think we have to go back and revisit it.
We have to go back and revisit it. So maybe with your permission, Eleanor, we could take some of these ideas and fold it into this work that we've already done, and happy to work with you on it.
Yeah, and I think to Lydia's point, it's up to make it a general donations policy. And if somebody's trying to donate something to the park, then probably the boards can say, all right, we're going to kick it to the parks committee to look at and evaluate it and then bring it back. But that gives us a full rubric for if somebody comes forth and wants to make a donation, how, how it's going to get handled at the village level and the board will handle the same.
Yeah, I like the idea, that idea, because then there's consistency.
I think that's important, yeah. So we'll make it a blanket for donations.
So, okay.
Great discussion. Any other discussion needed?
Thanks, Eleanor.
If you're set with me, I'll go. I'm there.
Well, I don't know, budget meeting.
Oh, I'm not ready with those. I guess, I'm not ready to approve the budget meetings because I got some more.
Sorry. I got so many.
Eleven hour comments.
I got some more input, so.
Sorry.
All right, so that's coming off.
So that's one off.
All right.
Thanks, Karen.
To approve, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for four eight twenty-five.
Second.
Well, I really can't, I'm abstaining. I was not here.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Did I don't have any comments?
All in favor? Aye. Aye abstain. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for four twenty-two twenty-five.
Second.
Any discussion? All in there say aye? Aye.
I abstained from that one.
All right, I'm going to move on. So the pleasure meetings will not be carried on. Committees, tree commission.
Very good. So the tree commission did its spring planting over the last weekend, if we can say it went swindingly. It was raining.
It did go swindingly.
It did go swindingly, as it was raining. But it was a very effective day, and it will be followed by a fall tree planting, which will be either late, no, late October, early November. And if folks are looking for the village to plant a tree for them in front of their home, they should come forward and send a request to Martina or via the village website because we are collecting, the commission is currently collecting sites for the fall time planting. So other than that, there are no action items, no, no permit items.
Oh, you should be getting a letter from the planning board about the Beakman Arms. It turns it off. So you have to like hold it a long time to turn it on and off and just pink it to pick it.
So what Lydia is referring to is that we're trying to better coordinate the actions of the planning board and the tree commission so that we have nice input.
For larger projects.
For larger projects, so that we have nice input in terms of trees and how to space them and how to make sure they go in in a way that will keep them healthy and sound. So we're looking forward to a tighter collaboration.
And what's exciting is for those of you who don't attend planning board meetings is the Beakman Arms is coming in front of the planning board to redo their front garden area as well as replace their sidewalk and some of those street trees. It's time. And so there's a really fulsome discussion happening about that, and it should end up actually in a really nice result for the Beakman Arms and that particular sidewalk and those trees, so.
I'm smart.
I definitely wanted to say thank you to the volunteers who helped at our second annual Earth Day celebration, which went really well despite the gale force winds. And, and yeah, this year, the town rec director really led on the organization, and I kind of facilitated that transfer of planning over to the town, since it's a hosted town. We did accept the bid for the heat pumps at the wastewater treatment plant, and we're moving along with that process to try to use up the rest of that clean energy communities grant.
Is that going to do it? Does that now?
It's not covering all of it, but it's a good chunk, it's ten thousand dollars.
Okay, good.
Just an update about the community choice aggregation. It looks like that's kind of dead in the water, unfortunately, guys, so thanks for all the hard work in that process. It's disappointing, but I wanted to, I wanted to encourage all of those folks out there in the community who were following along, hoping for clean energy by default, that they could look at subscribing to a community, a community solar farm, and you can get, you know, ten percent savings. So that's a really good option for folks as well.
And there are contracts, you can, Central Outset does maintain a page where you can contract with clean energy sources at a fixed price.
That's right. And it's just that everyone now is on the run to go ahead and do that. The Community Wide Climate Action Plan, this is the final piece of our multi-year involvement with CAPPY. I have a draft and shared it with the mayor and been meeting with the task force about it, and I'm now following up with some community partners that we had met with in, you know, late summer twenty twenty-four, such as the school district, the hospital, Chamber of Commerce, sharing it with the libraries, the farmers market. And I'm thinking about this plan as really like an opportunity for all those partners to come together and share what are they already doing, what have they accomplished, and then what are some ideas for projects over the next five years, deadline being twenty thirty, to try to reduce our emissions. So I hope to be sharing that draft with the entire board soon and sharing it publicly for a public comment, for our public feedback. I really want to get the, this board to formally adopt it before July, when I hope to submit it for our silver certification. As I mentioned before, compost, we had our first collector compost day, it went really well. It's, it's good stuff, which is great. And, and we did start onboarding town residents to the program. We've had about fifteen or so from the town that have signed on. And let's see what else. Oh, and the Marist students, our ongoing collaboration with Marist students, they worked to install that new sensor and weather, weather equipment at the wastewater treatment plant. So that's great. Congrats to them and thank you to those students for their hard work. That's it for now.
Thank you.
Eleanor, parks?
So it lays on to the Thompson Mazzarella Park Committee. Lots of things have been happening there. They put up new basketball backboards and nets and rims. They've, they've, they put a sprinkler system around the soccer field because they, they decided they, the little stones are getting kicked up on the artificial turf, and so they, they put lot grass around there, so they're going to do that. They've installed, they're going to install a sprinkler system in part of the little league field, just reporting. It's going to make, the skateboard park is done. Oh, they're also going to put up a netting because they have everything kind of crammed in there, so if kids play little league, the foul balls could be hitting cars or, you know, landing on the pickleball field, so they're going to put up some netting to prevent that. The bid for the bocce court came in ridiculously high, so they're looking for a local contractor who can just build it to specs because it's mostly a box with some different layers of material in it. So hopefully that will be done this summer. Something that people should know, a system to read license plates as the cars enter and leave, the park has been installed. And so the question came up whether the village police have a policy in place about how to, you know, use the data, who can use it, who can access it, how long it's supposed to be.
Have the police been like part of that conversation?
So, yes, we are. We're the ones that recommend it, that they put it in.
What is the purpose of putting that in?
Well, the problem is if somebody comes in and takes a child, for instance, this license recorder knows what cars are coming in and what cars are coming out.
Jesus Christ.
So it keeps it there.
It's a very stressful meeting between the EPA and child abduction, I'm just telling you.
Don't shoot the messenger. It's the ownership of the town. It's the ownership of the town, the data belongs to the town, our village police can access it because we gave them the specs to be able to do it.
Got it.
Right, so, you know, there's an ongoing discussion with, always with the town, on coverage. Just for everybody's awareness, we do have a contract with the town, we do do patrols on a pre-disguised schedule that is arranged with the town, but we are not on a call for them to be able to respond on everything. Their primary source of enforcement is the Dutch County Sheriff and the state police. So all those physical people have access to this data that the town will have to be able to, God forbid, there's something that goes, that happens.
We were actually discussing vandalism, we didn't get quite so dramatic.
I took it more to the extreme, which is what I, well, I think what we've been talking about, right?
Are there limited circumstances under which this data can be used?
I don't know those rules.
Okay.
There are, I mean, there's actually.
Excuse me, we have license recorders on our cars. We already collect data.
Yeah, no, I get that, but like, that's, you know, a police car doing that, not just, you know, someone driving a parking lot, being recorded.
That's up to the town, not up to us. It's their equipment, their responsibility to maintain and operate.
Are they being transparent about that?
Yeah, where, what they came to us and asked us for a regulation.
Are they being transparent with people other than the village board?
I can't.
Well, I will say that at the committee, there was concern about how the data was going to be used, and they talked about, they were very adamant, the people, you know, on the committee were adamant, I don't know how this, you know, this is going to turn out, but, but that they were very adamant that there needs to be a policy that's very specific on.
No, that's the town board.
Some kind of town board.
Yes, yes. I just thought it was important for people to know that.
Oh, thank you, Eleanor, it's good to know.
All right, so then, well, the parks committee, we've been, well, some of the things we've been working on is this donations policy, which was already discussed. I did mention the Lions Club, that they were thinking about raising money to do some replace for, actually, it's not even there anymore, but to buy equipment for the mini park, but that's, seems to be they had, you know, based on the feedback they've gotten, I guess they're going to be reviewing that. We talked about, let's see. In progress, we began a discussion on the need for master planning in our parks and what that entailed. So we had somebody come in who actually works for the state, Trevor Saxko. He actually, he said that he cannot help us do it because that would be a conflict of interest, but what he can do is he can tell us what has to, should be in a master plan or where to get resources, but he can't actually, unfortunately, help us on it, but he was very helpful. We've been approached about planting a pollinator garden, that was a recommendation from Vanessa. There'll be a meeting in June to see if there's a, if there's a location, a recommended location and size, where we could think about that.
Just to be clear, that's through Partners for Climate Action, which is my day job. So, oh, okay. I'm recreating myself in the process, and Eleanor is pointing the point, but the project is cool, they're, PCA is picking a handful of municipalities.
Five.
Five, only in the Hudson Valley. They're approaching municipalities that want to almost like showcase this pollinator habitat, these pollinator gardens, and it's, it's free charge, people have to apply as a, for a grant or anything, they just want to give it to us, so.
They have the money. It's, it's a, some sort of a payment that Monsanto had to make, possibly, I'm thinking because of, or something like that, she wasn't specific, but there is a pooled money, and they've got enough to do five gardens, so they're.
And if it comes here, you're going to bring it to us to.
Of course, totally, absolutely. That's why we, that's why we love this policy, that it all comes up to the village board. A volunteer has stepped forward to work on the doughboy area, to do some pruning, and we haven't worked out all the details. I'm going to meet with him this weekend, and then, Gary, I'll get back to you on the questions that you asked before we proceed. I've talked to Kyle, he knows about it. Right now, he, you know, he had lots of ideas, but basically, I think we should start slowly, and that would be to cut dead branches from the trees, the two trees, to prune the bushes and maybe trim the yews a little bit, but not get carried away. Then May 31st and June 1st, Lions will be doing work at the mini park. They go, they contacted, I think Kyle knows about it, bringing in mulch, and they're going to maybe do a little bit of weeding, and so that's just to make the, you know, that's their usual spring upgrade. And that's all that we have.
Awesome. Mayor.
Oh, one more thing. The, we wrote a letter of support for the Interact Club. They also wrote a grant to Partners for Climate Action. They received the grant.
Oh, great.
Yeah, so they will be doing water quality testing on the Landsman Kill, and they're upstream.
Or downstream.
I'm not sure where exactly.
In the Landsman Kill, not in the lake.
No, I know, but upstream or downstream of the lake?
No, upstream.
Upstream of the lake?
No.
And, and yeah, and they were also proposing doing some plantings along the, along the stream.
Great, so, yeah.
Trees and bushes.
I'm unclear as to whether it's riparian plantings or pollinator plantings.
Just so, there's been some concerns expressed to me as per the zoning code update about making sure that we don't allow people who have access to the Landsman Kill as part of their properties to not treat it properly in this particular riparian, the words that are coming out of my mouth, I don't know what, you know what I mean? Apparently, there's a few property owners that sort of clear cut all the way down to the stream.
Right.
And it's been requested of us as part of the zoning code process to figure out a way to ban that. I don't know, I, like, I'm still doing.
I could probably get you some research on that.
Yeah, because I don't know if the zoning code is the best way to handle that particular issue, like, I, Michelle and I need to figure out the answer to that particular question, but if you have any research on that, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to move on, special request. We have an application for, from American Legion Post 429 for our Memorial Day Parade. Just to remind everybody that we participate with the Memorial Day Parade by getting what was approved last year to get the DOT permit for, for the parade. So I believe that's starting in process, am I correct? But they submitted the application for May 26th, event setup time is at 10:00 a.m., start time 10:30, event end time is 12, and here it is at the same time. Location is Mulberry Street, East Market Street to Mill Street, estimated 500 people.
Great.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the application for our Memorial Day Parade on May 26th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Personnel, Martina. Martina's got an invitation to join NICOM Women's Advisory Committee. I'd like to make a motion to allow Martina, our village clerk, to participate in the NICOM Women's Advisory Committee.
Second. Out of, out of curiosity, is this something that we are required to authorize?
We, anybody or our employees have to do, and I asked to bring this in because it will take a small portion of her time during her day, so I would like to make sure the board is aware that in her participation, if there's any time, which is that very little time, that you're aware that she is participating in this committee. We have done the same with Karen for all of the committees that she does, so I'm following past practice.
Okay. I mean, would we ask the same out of our employees if they were volunteering for, like, like, I don't know?
Not if it doesn't.
Police or something?
If it doesn't interfere with their work.
Okay.
In this case.
It could potentially, okay, got it.
It's a meeting every other month for about an hour or so.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, and that's the reason why. What you do in your own time is your own time.
Yeah, that's why I was sort of wondering, okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then, anniversary, our superintendent of public works, DPW Kyle Amy, has been with us for three years. Congratulations, Kyle.
Yay, Kyle.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at 7:42. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.